Good morning and welcome to the regular council session for Elgin County. It is June the 27th. It is 9:00 AM and I will call this meeting to order. Before we proceed with the agenda, I'd like to welcome the new detachment commander for Elgin County, Ontario Provincial Police Inspector Jennifer Nims. Inspector Nims officially took over command of Elgin County OPP detachment on June 6th, 2023, after serving as the interim detachment commander in Norfolk County. Inspector Nims has been a member of the OPP for 18 years with stops in Haldeman County and the Peterborough area. She was a detachment commander in the remote northern indigenous community of Pekankum. Did I get that close? Thank you. Where she won the 2020 Ontario Women in Law Enforcement Award for her work in developing a community-based suicide prevention program. So, welcome Inspector Nims.
No, I'm sorry. Very excited to be the detachment commander here in Elgin and I look forward to working with each of you. And I just wanted to let you know that I am very accessible, so absolutely reach out to me at the detachment. And I'm happy to sit down, have a coffee and just discuss what's happening in the community so that we have a pulse on what's happening. So, thank you again for having me here. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much for attending again and welcome to Elgin County.
Thank you.
Moving on with the adoption of the minutes.
Be it resolved that the minutes of the meeting held on June 13th, 2023 be adopted.
Moved by councillor Hens, seconded by councillor Noble. All in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. I would remind members of any disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Moving down to section four, presentation or presenting petitions, presentations and delegations. And I would like to welcome Laura Sherwood, Director of Hospice Partnership, St. Joseph's Healthcare Society, Hospice of Elgin. Update. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for welcoming us here today. Warden, Ketchabah and council members, we are so excited to provide an update on our Hospice of Elgin project. The last time we came to these council chambers was, if you can believe it, 2019. So, this is not a new project and we are excited to let you know a bit of an update on what have we been doing behind the scenes on a very important project? And it has changed, so there's lots to share with you today. So, we're just going to move through a couple of slides and just kind of starting with, we do have, we have a problem in our community. And this is a problem where we have an aging demographic, we have significant gaps in our healthcare system. We were all acutely aware of the pressures on our hospitals, on our long-term care facilities, on our family physicians and the families of our community. That growing pressure is continuing and without a hospice and an aging demographic, our families are going to continue to struggle to get good care at end of life. And so, part of that solution, of course, is building a hospice. And so, when we went out to the community, we said, what would be important in building a hospice for this community? And this community looks different than every other community that exists out there. And what we heard is that we want a hospice that's so much more than beds. That beds and having a place to go and die, no matter how beautiful it is, is not just the care that people in this community are looking for. So, you can see that our vision started to expand. It started to include things like a palliative care clinic, family space. So, families can actually be onsite with their loved ones, children's space, because not everyone that ends their life is in their late, late 90s. And so, there's a certain practical reality of supporting all families who are facing that end-of-life journey. And so, this bold vision continues on our journey. And so, what is the impact that we are looking to have and what are we talking about as far as who needs support in our community? So, within the first year of doors open, hospice is expected to provide care to 500 individuals each and every year in our community. So, if you just take a moment to think about where are those individuals accessing care today? There are no dedicated beds at our STAG hospital for palliative care. People are struggling to stay at home. I think we're all acutely aware that just because you may want to stay at home and pay for home care, those resources are not available. Building a hospice is going to help relieve those significant pressures on our system and our community. So, where are we at with the project? And I can say that we have, quite frankly, an incredible place to build a hospice. This hospice will be anchored tucked in the woods and you can see this is actually the site. Some of the trees have started to come down. We will definitely be putting up more trees to kind of hide and tuck that cottage into the woods. And this will be located at 8 South Edgeware Road. So, while it's centrally located, you're going to hear a little bit more from me about the hospice is a place where we sure hope that families don't come. And so, I'll talk a little bit about that next. So, we've been working with our architect to start the design process and we have some schematic designs and our layout has started to finalize. But I wanted to share with you some notable pieces around what the hospice here in Elgin County will look like. Though the brown section on the right is your traditional bedded facility. So, those are 10 private suites. Each of those suites has patio door where families can wheel those beds right out into the beautiful wooded lot. They can enjoy breakfast, they can look up at the stars and have that privacy, but also that connection to nature. We believe having that connection to nature is important for our urban and rural community here in Elgin County. In that space is also a space for families to stay onsite so that they don't have to worry about the travel back and forth to get home, you know, and back to hospice. And so, by creating space for families to be onsite, we know that we're going to improve that support at end of life. So, that hospice section of our building will care for about 125 individuals each year. But what we are most excited about is the pink section. This is a space where about 400 people each and every year will access care and they may never come to hospice. The goal is to come in and get excellent pain and symptom management and be able to go back home. And when that journey gets a bit tough, we want you to be able to come into hospice for a short stay and then go back home. Nobody wants to come to hospice, but if you need it, we sure hope that it's there for all those families at that end-of-life journey. Building the hospice will also mean that we're creating new jobs and about 200 volunteer opportunities. Hospices are an efficient model of healthcare because of the support of our community that is anchored in that facility. So, what is our hospice going to look like? We started the journey and we talked about home-like. No longer are we using home-like because there's nothing that will replace your home. We are using the opportunity in this community to design the cottage. The cottage is a place of going and gathering with family and friends. It's a place to get away, have tranquility and space to connect to nature. And Hospice of Elgin will be tucked in the woods and have those cottage-like design elements. So, you can see at the front of the image, this small little hospice is actually Jessica's house in Exeter. That hospice is an element that really speaks to our community because of the timber structures and the stone. We are not looking for a modern facility in this community. We are looking for something that has more of that traditional feel. There will also be spaces in hospice for families to come and kids to climb on the sofa and be comfortable. Movie nights with popcorn will be at hospice. There will be spaces for gatherings. You can see the dining room and living room spaces that point out into that mature tree lot. That connection of all seasons, will you come to hospice for Christmas or come to hospice in the summer seasons? Will be a part of still continued living at hospice. We are not building a space where people in our community are going to die. We are building a space where people will come to get care when they need it and where they would like to have that care. And when no options are available, we want to make sure they're not suffering at home, that there is a wonderful place where they do have complete confidence in the care that they will receive. So, our early day design is of the cottage. You can start to see those timber structures and stone. This is not hospital or institutional-like. You can see the design elements are being significant. We want families to come in and feel that wraparound care. We want individuals to have confidence that their loved ones will be well cared for when they come to hospice. And that will be reflected in all of the design. Design matters. We're talking about a space where families will come and we want those families to feel welcomed, to be able to live more of those final moments of life. So, where are we at in our planning process? I think we had a discussion with this council way back in 2019. We were quite excited about getting the green light from the province on this project. We know that there has been groups championing this for decades and we knew this was our time. And so, we started that process and we came forward to council and we asked for $2.4 million. We knew that at the time that there was a significant commitment to hospital, 3.5 million was committed over 10 years. And that pledge payment was just coming to an end in the upcoming years. We knew that that was not the right time to ask council for funds and support. We are here today not to ask you for money, but to ask for your support as you start moving forward in your future budget planning process. And that support, we are not asking for 2.4 million. We have been busy and the community has rallied their support for Hospice of Elgin. We are thrilled to say that we are at 75% of our campaign goal, but we have still a significant leg to go to get that shovel in the ground. We are asking this council, when we get to those budget planning discussions, to consider a payment of $300,000 each year for four years is the range of support that we need to be able to get shovel in the ground for this project. We know that shovel in the ground has never mattered more on this project in advancing it because our community is growing. Those projects and growth in our community are putting significant pressures on trades, on costs, on projects. The sooner we can get shovel in the ground, we will have more certainty around costs of this project and more certainty around our timeline. It will be a quick process. Shovel in the ground anticipating to start this November, you will see a 12- to 14-month build period. And then, doors will open. Jobs will be created in the next year and a bit. Volunteer roles will start to develop and this new facility will open and start to relieve the pressures that exist in our community. We are excited about that journey. And I just, I think you can see, I've got a few folks just over my shoulder. There are hundreds of people working on this project. The support that we've seen from this community says this project matters. It matters to their families. I can think of our family physicians who've provided just incredible support. Family physicians, our hospital physicians, retired physicians have rallied and made a significant gift in the amount just over $500,000. That is humbling. These physicians will not step foot and provide care in this facility. They are doing it not because it benefits them, but because they know the need is so significant. So, we want you to join us. We want this council to be a part of such a legacy project for our community. We understand that you have some significant challenges and many priorities as you move forward in your work. I know there's lots of changes on the horizon and we just thank you for what you do, your leadership and support of this community. It does matter. So, I just would thank you again and open it up to any questions that you have about the project.
Well, thank you Laura for those kind words and also for providing that excellent update. I'm going to open up the floor. Is there anyone from council that has any questions for Laura at this point? Councillor Sloan.
Thank you Laura and to everyone that's attending. Laura, are there levels of sponsorship with respect to, you know, certain, when you're raising funds? And this is personally as well as as a councillor. Are there, are there levels that people contribute to? I mean, I'm sure you have some significant donations from maybe the private sector. And I'm just curious how you, how you do that with respect to the levels of, of contribution.
For sure. This, we have many different levels. With different levels comes different opportunities to recognize those significant gifts. But I would say that every gift matters in this project. This is, you know, fundraising and doing campaigns. You're not hearing a lot about this project. We are doing our absolute best to sit down with individuals in this community and have those one-on-one conversations. This is about our community, death and dying. That's not something you're going to hear a lot of ads about right now. And so, those one-on-one conversations and the generosity of our community comes at many different levels. But there will be a more important piece to this is that transfer of moral ownership. That when we are ready and we come out and we're just about to cross the finish line and get doors open, we need everyone to have an opportunity to make, whatever level is appropriate, some small gift so that they feel like this is their hospice. This is where their family will go. We want the community to have an opportunity to come and sit on the beds and taste the soup and, you know, take a look at the beautiful space that hospice will be. And we also want to take an opportunity to get people into this hospice before they even need end-of-life care. We've heard social determinants of health. Hospice is thinking about new ways for bringing the community into that care earlier. So, what that means is can your girl guide group come in and use the fire pit for a marshmallow roast? Can the kids that are at the schools and the surrounding communities come in and bake cookies with our chef? Can there be groups that host meetings onsite? How do we build life in this community into this building? That's a responsibility. This isn't just a healthcare facility. This is a place that we reflect our community in this. And so, that's where those donations matter because we have that commitment at all levels. But those, our current focus, of course, is on transformational gifts. As you know, there's a certain practicality of getting these projects up and running. And so, our focus at this point is as much as we can on those significant gifts above the $100,000. And we're seeing the community respond, but we still, like I said, have a ways to go. And that's where, where we're asking for consideration in the future for this council as well. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Any additional questions? Councillor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. So, yes, first off, thank you for, for what you're doing. I can have a little bit of experience now in fundraising with Terrace Lodge and I fully appreciate the, the passion, the commitment and, you know, the, the audience speaks for itself. So, I fully agree. This is, this is a problem and it needs to be addressed. Having said that, then I just want to also just always remind ourselves that as a municipality, because I fully agree that the problem is there and the commitment, the support of the community and the commitment is there. As a municipality, just as a reminder, we have a long list of services that we must provide. We have no choice. And so, we have very little left in discretionary spending. So, we have to be absolutely mindful of that. And that's why I think in 2020, the council, the previous council expressed, you know, very explicitly expressed our support and how we would as a municipality, as council, support this endeavor in every way that we could and, but not in a financial matter. So, I appreciate that this is a new council and a few things have changed. So, this is always an opportunity to reconsider, but I just want, just for new members of council, that is something that the previous council had considered very, very carefully and made the, you know, difficult decision to say, we'll offer support, just not financial support. And, and that's something that other municipalities have done as well. There's other ways to support and sort of in-kind contributions. So, now I understand that this council may have an opportunity as we move towards next year's budget. So, maybe a couple of suggestions would be to, either for staff or with your help, to look at other models of contributions, like what other municipalities have contributed to other hospices. I know you have a beautiful pictures of other facilities that have opened. And so, I think it would be good for us to consider what has been the contribution. For example, I know just a little bit of research, we can look at just our neighbor, Chatham Kent generously contributed 1.5 million, I think over five years. But we also have to keep in mind that that's from an operating budget of, I think, over $400 million. So, the ask here, for example, at 1.2, our operating budget sits at about 69. So, I think like everyone, we have to consider contributions that are proportionate to our, you know, what we can afford. So, I think that will be good to, to look at just to see what other contributions. And, and the other question I have is, you have, you noted in your report that you have received support from the city of St. Thomas. What is the value of that contribution? Do we know?
So, I'm going to use estimated value because we're still working with the city. The city of St. Thomas has donated the parcel of land. They've also donated the fees for a lot of the environmental insight work that has started, which can be significant. So, if I had to estimate that, we're probably close to $750,000. I would want to be open and clear that we're having ongoing discussions with the city. And I know we are always mindful about the parity between both city and county. So, wanting to make sure this council is both up to speed as we're progressing along in that project, as much as we are also updating city council. So, those conversations are ongoing. And, and I think, you know, hands down, we recognize and I just want to acknowledge the significant pressures. I, I don't think hospice would not want to be here asking for support if we didn't have to. I think we all know that if, if the province fully funded projects and, and I know you guys have, you know, other healthcare projects that you are supporting as well. It is, we're finding ourselves at that balance of trying to figure out how do we engage the community as best we can. And I think it, again, we are humbled by that support to date, but also the tension of keeping that project moving forward. And so, the, the balance of getting some capital support to, to keep that project, getting shovels in the ground, knowing that we have complete confidence that these are not operational dollars, as you'd mentioned, that to operate hospices that will fall to Hospice of Elgin and Hospice of Elgin falls under the umbrella of sister organization, St. Joseph's Healthcare Society. So, we have great degrees of confidence around that operating model and being successful. And we are thrilled to say that the province has acknowledged the role hospices play in relieving the pressures on the healthcare system. And so, they've recently made an announcement that there is an increased funding up by 45% per bed in operational funding. So, essentially, we just need help to get this built. And that's that getting it built, not in 10 years. This community has been around this table, as you know, for, for a while. And so, we are now well positioned with confidence to be able to say, we've got the drawings, we've got land, we are ready to go. We just need some support to be able to get there, acknowledging that that support has to be within the realm of other community projects matter as well. So, we acknowledge that hospice doesn't operate in a silo. We are very supportive of all of our healthcare partners and more broadly, our, our larger community because we know that's important as well. So, we acknowledge those pressures and, and just thank you for at least advancing that conversation and consideration. And we're happy to come back and provide more details on some of the other contributions that other counties have made because it has been significant and varied in different communities as well. So, happy to share that to support those conversations into the future.
Supplementary?
If I may, Mr. Warden, yes, just to conclude that it would be good to also see some advocacy in addressing the fact that, so whose responsibility is it? So, if it's not on our mandatory to-do list at the municipal level and it's not properly funded at the provincial level, then where does it ought to be? And I think it would be, I think it would be good to see some advocacy work from your group at the same time to, to, so we can get to the root cause. And you don't have to be here if, if you don't want to.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions?
Uh, Warden?
Oh, sorry, Deputy Warden Jones. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. Just, just a few comments. I think this is a project that is definitely needed in Elgin. I know our own family and many of these families have gone through this. I would like to make a motion that we at least push it to budget deliberations for more wholesome discussion.
Uh, just to clarify, Deputy Warden, you're looking for more wholesome discussion or wholesome discussion during budget deliberations or what are you suggesting?
Correct.
Okay. Have you got something like that, Jenna? You will. She will. We're crafting that. Is there anything else from anyone else? Councillor Noble.
Hi Laura, I was just curious where the, the funding will come from for the ongoing operational costs? Will there still be fundraising for that as well?
Yes, so with the new top-up from the province, that will cover approximately 60% of ongoing operating costs will be taken care of by the province each and every year. And then, we do find ongoing fundraising costs will need to continue in the amount of roughly $1 million. So, our organizations have found that a significant amount of gifts comes from memorial giving. So, those families who've gone through and received care, of course, will have a couple of special events just to celebrate. That's not only good and healthy for our community, but it's also good and therapeutic for those families who can return to hospice in a celebratory way. So, it, between the events and our ongoing support from families through those gifts, that, those parts and pieces will make up an operational fundraising plan. And so, we have seen in Sarnia, Lampton and also London Middlesex, they are raising in excess of 1.4 million each and every year through the community support and those grateful families. So, we, we, based on what we're seeing in this community, we know Elgin County takes care of their own. And so, we have full confidence that there would not be any exceptions to that generous support moving into operations. And we have also built-in sustainability. So, part of our responsibility in our business case is that not only do we raise, you know, the money to get this thing built, is that we do need to have the sustainability fund to ensure that we can operate for years to come. So, nobody wants to invest in a project where somebody's coming back, you know, the next year saying, "Help me." And so, our experience has built that sustainability plan into our capital campaign. So, we have complete confidence moving into operations. Thank you.
Okay. Anything further? All right, Laura, thank you very much and to your group for attending this morning and giving this presentation. It's been a very useful update. A lot of information has been, uh, given over to us in the last, you know, especially during the question period and I certainly appreciate that.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Jenna, have you got a motion crafted?
Yes. Be it resolved that staff be directed to consider the budgetary implications of Hospice of Elgin's request for a total investment of $300,000 each year over four years during county council's 2024 budget deliberations.
Could we add in there that we received the presentation for?
And that the presentation from the Hospice of Elgin be received for information.
Okay. Deputy Warden, are you willing to move that?
Yes, I am.
All right. I need a seconder. Councillor Noble will second. All in favor? That's carried. And thank you very much. Moving on with committee of the whole.
Be it resolved that we do now move into committee of the whole council.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that, please? Councillor Noble and Councillor Sloan will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Moving on with section six, reports of council, outside boards and staff. Council, 6.1, councillor Shiger, Terrace Lodge Conference of Home Campaign, the 2022 fundraising report. Councillor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yes, so I'm on behalf of the fundraising committee. I'm pleased to present our 2022 report. I think the report is pretty clear and self-explanatory. So, I just want to take then the, a moment to appreciate the work of the committee. You know that everyone on the committee does this fundraising work just from the corner of their desks. We don't have a dedicated, you know, foundation or dedicated team or anyone, I guess, fully assigned to this work. So, I'm very, very pleased with the progress and with the community support that we are getting. So, we still have ways to go. And so, I'll just again, use this opportunity to remind council that this is a shared responsibility. If you sit on the board, if you're If you sit on the board, if you're a member of a church or any community groups, it's been very success. The what's been most successful have been the partnerships with other groups, where if your organization is already organizing an event and you may choose to then dedicate all the proceeds of that event to the Terrace Lodge Comforts of Home Campaign, then the committee would be right behind you and helping you with with your efforts. I just got an email again this morning from a church who's willing to, with our help, willing to dedicate the proceeds of their annual bazaar to Terrace Lodge. And so that's exactly the kind of partnerships that we that we need. So that's why, again, I I turn to all of you for for your support, so that we can keep going and complete this journey that we've embarked on. Happy to answer any question.
Well, thank you for that report. I can attest that the the fundraising committee or members have been out at festivals and things and raising awareness. And I certainly appreciate and applaud the efforts there. Does anyone have any questions for Counselor Shiger? Yes, Counselor Sloan.
Through you, Warden. What's, I was reading with interest the events you had in twenty twenty-two. Do you have events planned specifically like the charity gala or anything of the like for twenty twenty-three?
None at this time.
Thank you.
Anyone else for any questions? And thank you for that report. Jenna?
Be it resolved that the Terrace Lodge Comforts of Home Campaign twenty twenty-two annual report be received for information?
Do I have a mover and seconder, please? Counselor Latham will move, Counselor Sloan will second. All in favor? Any opposed? It's carried. Moving on with section six point two, the acting manager of planning supplemental report, municipality of BAM official plan amendment number thirty-two. Good morning, Paul.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. I'm happy to provide this supplementary report to county council. This is a follow-up from a staff report that was prepared addressing official plan amendment number thirty-two to the municipality of BAM's official plan. This was heard at the last council meeting and council directed that staff provide this report. I might take to a request that that council perhaps turn to page two of the of the report under discussion, and I'll highlight some of the main points of this. If council will recall, this official plan amendment was required because the applicants had constructed in advance of building permits and other planning permissions. This is an attempt to legalize this situation, but they proceeded with the construction of a workshop on an agricultural parcel in the rural area of BAM. This is a not unsubstantial workshop for an electrician's business and a house that's also been located on the same property. And this is what's required, the the official plan amendment. With respect to the primary points of this OPA, I would note for county council that BAM municipal staff have recommended refusal of the application based on inconsistencies with the provincial policy statement, non-compliance with the BAM official plan and non-compliance with the county official plan. After county staff have had the opportunity to review this, we do not see a conflict with the provincial policies, policy statement with regards to this application. With respect to the BAM OP, we do note that this is very much a marked departure from the policies of the BAM official plan in terms of, in terms of the way that these policies are structured as to what is permitted in the agricultural area. We do consider this to be a marked departure. But notwithstanding this and the nature of an amendment in terms of conformity with the with the intent of BAM's official plan, the the BAM council has indicated that they believe that this is consistent and conforms to the intent of the official plan, notwithstanding that we would consider this to be a marked departure of those policies. And with respect to the county official plan, we highlight two issues of compliance with a with regards to home industries and the agricultural designation. And this is really the crux of the discussion. That's before before council today. And it's one of the, when it, these are the two primary issues that county staff struggled with in making a recommendation to county council as to whether or not to approve or to refuse this official plan amendment. And the two, two, the two provisions require that home industries and the agricultural designation generally rely on the same water and sewer infrastructure and driveway from the public road as the principal use of the property and that the floor area of the home industry is consistent with the scale of the uses on the property. So with respect to the scale of the uses on the property, the county official plan does define a home industry as a small-scale industrial use. Notwithstanding this, there's no definition in the county official plan and not normally is there one that that defines what what constitutes small scale. So in this case, county staff did refer to provincial guidelines for permitted uses in agricultural areas to 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 analyze the the proposed workshop or the existing workshop against. We would note that the proposed workshop would meet the requirements of the the province's guidelines for essentially for the maximum size of a home industry. The province's guidelines do indicate that that the home industry should not occupy more than two percent of a farm parcel to a maximum size of approximately a hectare, which translates into about two point five acres of land, and that includes all buildings, parking areas, et cetera. From our review, the the home industry does meet that, the the existing workshop. Notwithstanding that, we do recognize that this is a maximum. It does, it does fall under the maximum permitted under under provincial guidelines and not necessarily and does not necessarily indicate that this is appropriate in this case, but it does meet provincial requirements in terms of the scale of the of the operation. The the second matter that I that I noted in terms of compliance with the county official plan is that the the use be generally generally rely upon the same water and sewer infrastructure and driveway as the principal use of the property. And in, and I'm highlighting the word and noting the word generally, as it does provide some consideration of some exceptions to to this rule. Normally, when we see generally, shall a use comply with X, Y, Z? When we present something in front of council, we would expect that the use would comply with this provision unless there was some sort of extenuating circumstance or reason or rationale why it was inappropriate or it could not be complied with. In this particular case, we do know that there is a shared driveway. We do know that there are separate septic systems. Municipality of BAM was not able to confirm whether or not there's a shared water service. So in this case, we do have compliance with the driveway provision. And we're not entirely sure whether we have compliance with the servicing provisions. Notwithstanding that, we do, this is not an absolute requirement, but it's a general requirement of the plan. However, we've not been provided any rationale or explanation by the applicant as to why this is an extenuating circumstance that these that these users do not share the same service. We've not been provided with any rationale as to how to analyze this this development proposal against these plans. So that brings us to, those are really the two outstanding matters with respect to this application. As was noted by the interim CEO at the last, the last council meeting, he advised that council may find it useful to understand whether or not these applicants would likely be prepared to appeal a decision of county council if it were to go forward. As I note in the staff report, these are, these are existing uses on the property. The applicants are attempting to legalize these uses with the investment that's been made by the applicants into these two uses, the house and the 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 workshop. And I certainly can't speak for the applicants. I've certainly not questioned them about whether or not they would, they would be considering an appeal. But as a, as a professional planner, I certainly wouldn't be surprised, given the investment they've made in the property, if they were to appeal council's refusal of this. And and finally, I, as I noted, ultimately, county staff were not in a position to make a recommendation for approval of this OPA, but noted that county council may wish to approve it depending on the degree of flexibility that council wishes to read into the policies. And with respect to that degree of flexibility, again, this is, this is really a test of whether or not council satisfied that this is small scale in nature, the workshop. As I noted, it does meet provincial requirements or provincial guidelines with respect to what the province considers to be small, stale or appropriate in the ag area. Notwithstanding that, certainly as a professional planner, I I I would suggest that this, these uses would be best located in industrial designation. And further, whether or not council wishes to, wishes to essentially, essentially provide some additional flexibility with respect to the requirements that these uses share the same driveway, water and sewer infrastructure. In this case, we're quite certain that they certainly share the same driveway. We're certain that they likely have separate septic systems and they may share a water service. We've not been provided any rationale other than that this is the applicant's preference for these, for this servicing arrangement. But and and again, council does have some flexibility with the incorporation of the term generally connected. But but this is, yes, this is essentially the analysis, the additional analysis that staff have conducted for council's consideration. And we do believe that this type of use would be best located ultimately in an industrial designation, notwithstanding that it does meet provincial requirements in terms of size and scale. And there is some flexibility in with respect to county official, pardon me, county policy with respect to servicing of the site. So our our recommendation ultimately is that county council could consider approval of this OPA if they so wish.
Thanks for the clarification, Paul. Uh, does anyone have any questions, Counselor Hens?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm curious at the state of construction or where were, are they at with this building?
Through you, Mr. Warden. It's my understanding and certainly from the site photos that I've been provided by by the municipality and the applicant that the the uses are built on the property, that these are, these have been constructed.
Thank you.
Anything additional? Yes, Counselor Whitner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Has there been any permits issued for this building?
I beg your pardon.
Like I reading, they don't even know where the well, if it's even connected. Obviously, the building doesn't meet the codes that it should be meeting. Is that a good statement or a correct statement?
It has been alluded to by local staff that it was built as an agricultural outbuilding. Now, whether that meets commercial standards or not, I would assume not. But that is something that would have to be pursued, even I would think that if the county were to approve this, there may be requirements to upgrade the building.
Correct, so I think that should be looked at, because if we do this, we're looking at rewarding non-compliance, and where is this going to stop? Permits are there for a reason, to protect people. And if this is like an industrial building with five or six employees and something happened, BAM would be on the hook, and I believe the county would be on the hook eventually, so I don't think I could support it on that basis. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Deputy Warden Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would agree with the Counselor Whitner full-heartedly. Being in the construction industry, agricultural business, building permit does not meet commercial standards in no way, shape or form. And trust loads alone would be doubled for a commercial building, for sure. So we're, we're walking a really fine wire here and I'd have to agree, I really, I can't support it because to to build buildings without a permit in this day and age, you know, you just, there's, there's reasons why that is done.
Yeah. To clarify, my understanding is that it was built with a permit, but perhaps not under the proper uh, construction techniques, shall we say, for the intended use.
All right, thank you for that clarification.
Counselor Noble?
Through you, Mr. Warden. We're just talking about the planning part of it, though. We're not actually talking about the construction part. Would the construction part come back to BAM to deal with the construction part?
That is my understanding from staff deliberations when this came to BAM is that should the OPA amendment take place? And should the the planning fall in, then there may be some requirements from a site planner to to upgrade the building? That is what I was led to believe. Yes, supplementary?
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden. So then, if there's a problem with the building that actually doesn't come back to us, we're just dealing with the planning in this part, right? So if there's an issue with the building and and trusses like the grant was speaking of, then uh, that would be something else.
Well, it would, it would fall to the local municipality to deal with. Yes, that's my understanding. Have I said anything that's incorrect, Paul?
Uh, no, Mr. Warden, and you're correct. So the entire building permitting process would still have to be addressed by by the local municipality, by the local chief building official. So if the, if the, if no permit was issued for this building at all, and the the applicants or the the owner of the building would then have to go through a process of legalizing the building and demonstrating to the local municipality that that has been constructed to the, to the standards of the Ontario Building Code. And if a incorrect permit for a class of building was issued, so in this case, we, you know, we're talking about industrial buildings versus farm buildings. They fall under different classes under the building code. It would be, it would be, it would fall on the owners of the building to gain, again, demonstrate that it's either been built to the proper class of permit that's been issued by the, by the, by the, by the local municipality or to bring it into conformity with the requirements of 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 that class of permit, which may mean shoring up and introduction of fire suppression. It could be the shoring up of 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 walls or the, pardon me, the floor area, et cetera.
Thank you for that, Paul. Counselor Noble first.
I feel confident making a motion that we go with staff's recommendation at this time.
There's, there's, there's either approve or deny. Okay. No, you're, you're, you're correct. Counselor Sloan?
I'll second it.
Don, please.
Thank you, Warden. I was approached during the last week by a member of county council, asking if there's anything we could do in a punitive way. I think council had expressed clearly, and I think Deputy Warden raised the issue at our last meeting, that we don't want to be rewarding people that just float the rules as and regulations. It sends a very wrong message to the community about future projects. So the question was, can county impose some sort of a financial penalty or a fine? I've had consultation with our director of legal services. Because of our focus on planning, as Counselor Noble just said, it's not really in our bailiwick. It really is in the local municipalities' bailiwick with the chief building official and when we issue permits for construction projects. So one of the things I would suggest council may wish to consider is send county administration back to work with your local municipal staff to see whether we could come up with some sort of wording that would, in effect, I think the way Nick described it is impose a financial penalty when you're looking at your building permits. If someone chooses to move ahead with construction and they haven't had the chief building official go in and do inspections and so on, it'd basically be a punitive fine. And you make it large enough that there's a disincentive for people to fly in the face of the rules. And I think that would help address some of the concerns that county councils raise. So you can't look in the rearview mirror on this one, you know, we'd have to do what we're going to do. But I think we could send a very clear message to say, if you do this again, there are going to be negative consequences and we're asking everybody to follow the rules and get in line. So administration would be, would welcome that sort of direction from council and we'd go back and work with your respective teams. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that, Don. I'm thinking from a process point of view, we would deal with the motion first and then come back and perhaps incorporate a second motion, if that, depending upon the first motion. Counselor Shiger?
That's okay. We can comment on the, maybe a follow-up motion on on the direct, direction proposed by the CAO.
All right. Okay. Jenna? Unless there are any other comments before we call this motion? Jenna?
Be it resolved that the council of the corporation of the county of Elgin approve official plan amendment number thirty-two to the official plan of the municipality of BAM and that staff be directed to provide notice of this decision in accordance with the requirements of the Planning Act.
Okay, having heard the motion, all in favor? Opposed? It's a no, I haven't put my hand up yet. It's a four. One, two, three. It's a four, four. Warden's going to vote against. So it's defeated. Does, that negates the requirement of a further discussion on a punitive measure in my mind. Counselor Shiger?
Um, Mr. Warden, I don't think there- Um, Mr. Warden, I don't think they're mutually exclusive. I I think in order I would recommend looking into some sort of fine so we can more in a preventative uh, measure because I I I do think this will likely, this has a good chance of being won at a at a provincial tribunal. And would, and if that's the case, then we're we're back to square one and with no disincentive. So I I would move that staff be directed to work with the local municipality partners to investigate ways to deter this kind of approach.
All right. No, that's, that's fair because you don't know what the decision's going to be coming back from an O L T. The O L T may overrule or they may send it back to the county. All right, if that's the case, and if that's the case, then yes, it'll be right back on our laps. I'm not opposed to the idea of exploring disincentives and wording. I know that things exist at the local level from a building compliance point of view, but still there's nothing wrong with furthering that discussion from the administrative level. Deputy Warden.
Yeah, I, thank you, Mr. Warden. I would support Counselor Shigeru's motion.
Okay. We're waiting for the clerk to scribe something here. Stand by. Jenna, you have something for us?
Yes. Be it resolved that staff be directed to work with local municipal partners to investigate ways to promote adherence to the approved building inspection process and that the recommendations would be shared with local municipal councils for their consideration.
Okay, and I believe Counselors Shigeru, you're willing to move that. And I believe that Deputy Warden Jones, you're willing to second that. Okay. Uh, did you have a comment on that, Counselor Noble, or? They already beat you to punch. All right, all in favor of that motion? That is carried. Thank you for that. Section six, three, Director of Homes and Senior Services request for temporary part-time clerical support. Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, and thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. Uh, so the home staff will implement updated scheduling software and a robocall system as part of the previously approved and planned human capital management project work beginning in September of twenty twenty-three. This process will require additional administrative staff support while we train, set up, test and implement. The software which is scheduling and robocall is anticipated to maximize efficiencies, reduce overtime costs, improve staff morale and resident care and services. A request for seven months of support per home is being sought. The funds required for the temporary part-time support in twenty twenty-three can be funded through efficiencies related to vacancies and unanticipated leave absence and the cost associated with January twenty twenty-four shall be considered during the twenty twenty-four budget process. Staff do recommend this request to council be approved to support successful implement.
Counselor Shigeru.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to Michelle. I was just wondering if you could expand a little bit on the nature of the delay so that we can see if is there likelihood that this will continue to to be delayed and and I, if I understand correctly, this position has been in place already for a little while. So has, how has that position been utilized to date?
Great. Both good questions through you to the rest of council. So the 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 plan was to start in March of twenty twenty-three, but we did have some delays as I noted in the report. So just further explanation. There were some staff absences as well. We had trouble with recruitment at one of the homes for the temporary clerk position for this year, and there were some changes to the agreement that were negotiated both ways. So there was some delay in getting the document signed and that was just recently signed in June of twenty twenty-three. So we did discuss starting right away in the summer, but there's already previously approved vacations and time off through the summer. So we want to be successful. So both the vendor and the county staff have recommended that we start in September of twenty twenty-three. We're we're pretty confident with those those dates and we've had some planning meetings and we're ready to go and we're starting some discovery document work in advance of September as well, just to ready for the project. Those positions, you're right, have been in place since early on in the pandemic and they were funded previously through the prevention and containment funding dollars. And really, they've been in place to support the increased volume of call-ins related to staff absences and just recruitment challenges that we've experienced as well as the very manual work that's involved with the current system that we're utilizing for scheduling and the manual callouts. So we're really looking forward to the the new opportunities that the system will will provide us. So those are the reasons for previously positions in place. Thank you.
And thank you for that, Michelle. Just to refresh my memory. This is a a carryover from the the original software deficiencies because originally the software for human capital was was to incorporate this kind of of robocall. Found out that they wouldn't or couldn't do it. So this is a new bolt-on that's going in place, correct?
You are absolutely correct.
All right. So this has been ongoing for a little bit and the previous term actually was dealing with it. Okay. Any further questions from anyone? Okay, Jenna, please.
Be it resolved that the report titled Homes Request for Temporary Part-Time Clerical Support dated June twentieth, twenty twenty-three from the Director of Homes and Senior Services be received and filed and that council supports the request for the continuation of the temporary part-time clerical support until January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four at the cost of fifty-five thousand, one hundred and six dollars to support the implementation of of scheduling software and robocall.
Do we have a mover and seconder, please? Counselor Hens will move and Counselor Shigeru will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Six, four, Director of Homes and Senior Services, Homes, Policy Updates Related to for to Fixing Long-Term Care Act twenty twenty-one, Phase Two Updates. Michelle?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. On April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, the Fixing Long-Term Care Act Phase Two Regulations were released and are in force. The updates focus on three key areas, one being staffing qualifications, the second being medication management and drug administration, and third, the resident experience. For staffing qualifications, there were amendments to some of the roles to match qualification requirements with the responsibilities and accountabilities of the role. All of those updates have been communicated with the Human Resources Department and applicable homes managers for review and consideration as part of the recruitment process. For medication management and drug administration, amendments were made to enhance medication safety for residents and to enable all regulated health professionals to administer drugs in long-term care homes according to their scope of practice. For resident experience, amendments were made to air conditioning requirements to make sure residents can live comfortably in their homes and to reinforce accountability among long-term care homes for complying with air conditioning requirements. Additionally, there were minor adjustments to the alternative alternate level of care placements in long-term care homes from hospital and the role of medical directors from a clinical to a medical care model, which is more consistent with their scope of practice. As such, policy updates were made in both the maintenance and the nursing policy manuals as outlined in the report before you. The revised policy changes will be communicated as required to those in need, whether that's staff, residents, families, visitors, volunteers or contracted workers. And the policy revisions align with legislation and best practices to support resident and staff safety and service delivery. The recommendations are before you and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you for that report, Michelle. Does anyone have any questions? Counselor Widner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to Michelle. Michelle, I read a lot about air conditioning here. Do all the homes and all the rooms have air conditioning at this time or?
Yes, great question. Through you to the rest of council. So all three of our homes are in good position. We're meeting the requirements as outlined before you. So every resident room does have air conditioning and every common area as well, including the addition at Terrace Lodge.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Anything else? Okay, Jenna, please.
Be it resolved that the report titled Homes Policy Updates Related to Fixing Long-Term Care Act twenty twenty-one, Phase Two Updates dated June twentieth, twenty twenty-three from the Director of Homes and Senior Services be received and filed and that council approve the County of Elgin Homes and Senior Services Nursing and Maintenance Policy Manual Updates to ensure alignment with current Ministry of Long-Term Care Legislation.
Do we have a mover and seconder, please? Counselor Latham and Counselor Widner will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Six point five from the Director of Homes and Senior Services, Homes, Infection Prevention and Control Policy, two point one zero, Immunization. Staff COVID nineteen update. Michelle?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. So a report was received in March of twenty twenty-three from the Ministry of Long-Term Care that stated the risk of severe outcomes to residents has been reduced with the high vaccine uptake among our residents and availability of safe and effective therapeutics. So they were working closely with the Office of the Chief Medical Officer of Health to normalize and embed COVID nineteen response measures into our routine operations, including winding down COVID-specific requirements with a phased approach. In relation to the COVID nineteen visitor and staff vaccination requirements, the ministry stated that long-term care homes that have retained their proof of vaccination requirements are strongly recommended to revisit their policies with consideration to the current context of the pandemic and the resident bill of rights, including the residents' rights to receive visitors of the choice. Specifically, they went on to state that while continuing to promote the uptake of boosters, homes are encouraged to consider permitting entry to visitors and qualified staff regardless of their vaccination status. In March of twenty twenty-three, this council did approve the removal of mandatory vaccination for visitors to our homes with a shift to strongly encouraging vaccination, including the medically recommended booster doses. With that change, there's been no increase seen in our homes of COVID nineteen cases or outbreaks. As such, the staff COVID nineteen policy has been reviewed and updated at effective July fourth of this year to remove the mandatory vaccination requirement for staff also with the same shift to strongly encouraging COVID nineteen vaccination. If there are future provincial directives related to COVID nineteen vaccination, staff will return to council with updated information. And so the same communication process, we will communicate to staff, residents, families and visitors and post the updated policy on surge learning. And the infection prevention and control policy presented today does align with the March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three ministry guidance documents and related regulations. And there's three recommendations before you and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that report, Michelle. Does anyone have any questions? It is relatively straightforward. Okay, Michelle, please, or excuse me, Jenna, please.
Be it resolved that the report titled Homes Infection Prevention and Control Policy, two point one zero, Immunization Staff COVID nineteen Update dated June twentieth, twenty twenty-three from the Director of Homes and Senior Services be received and filed and that council approve the County of Elgin Homes and Senior Services Infection Prevention and Control Policy, two point one zero, Immunization Staff COVID nineteen update to ensure alignment with current Ministry of Long-Term Care recommendations and that staff be directed to return to council anytime that the provincial directives related to COVID nineteen vaccination are updated.
Do I have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Sloan will move. Counselor Crockett will second. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Section seven, Council Correspondence, seven point two items for cons- for information, the consent agenda. You have several pieces of correspondence. Does anyone have any questions or concerns with any of this correspondence, anything they want to draw attention to? Personally, I still like seven point two point five, but we supported that last time. So I think we're on record with that. Okay, seeing no hands up or questions, please, Jenna.
Be it resolved that correspondence items seven point two point one to seven point two point eight be received and filed?
Do I have a mover and seconder, please? Counselor Noble will move. Counselor Sloan will second. All in favor? That's carried. Brings us to section eight. Uh, statements and inquiries by members. Well, I'll take leeway here and just to announce that it's Counselor Latham's birthday today and I wish him a very happy birthday on behalf of council. Uh, notice of motion. And finally, matters of urgency. Okay. We are going to be moving into a closed session and I'm going to recommend that we open into a closed session and we will take a ten-minute break and then we will get into it. Okay, Jenna?
Be it resolved that we do now proceed into closed meeting session in accordance with the Municipal Act to discuss the following matters under Municipal Act Section two thirty-nine-two. Close meeting item number one, closed meeting minutes, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Close meeting item number two, Human Resources Update, Section two thirty-nine-two B. Close meeting item number three, C E O Recruitment, Section two thirty-nine-two B and K. Close meeting item number four, Boundary Adjustment, Section two thirty-nine-two H and K. And close meeting item number five, Advice Regarding Potential Litigation, Section two thirty-nine-two E and F.
Okay, do I have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Sloan will move. Counselor Widner will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Welcome back. We are now motion to rise and report.
Be it resolved that we do now rise and report?
Mover, seconder, please. Counselor Latham will move. Counselor Sloan will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Close meeting item number one.
Be it resolved that the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three closed session minutes be adopted?
Mover and seconder, Counselor Sloan. Counselor Hens will second. All in favor? That's carried. Close meeting item number two.
Be it resolved that the confidential report from the Director of Human Resources be received for information?
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Noble will move. Counselor Shigeru will second. All in favor? That's carried. Close meeting item number three.
Be it resolved that the confidential report from the Chief Administrative Officer Clerk be received for information and that the Chief Administrative Officer Clerk be directed to initiate the recruitment process for the position of county engineer and for the position of a permanent chief administrative officer?
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Widner will move. Counselor Crockett will second. All in favor? That's carried. Close meeting item number four.
Be it resolved that the warden proceed as directed?
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Sloan. Counselor Noble will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And closed meeting number, item number five.
Be it resolved that the Director of Legal Services proceed as directed?
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Hens will move. Counselor Latham will second. All in favor? That is carried. Section eleven, motion to adopt recommendations from the committee of the whole.
Be it resolved that we do now adopt recommendations of the Committee of the Whole?
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Noble will move. Counselor Sloan will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Consideration of the bylaws?
Be it a first, second and third read of bylaw number twenty-three dash thirty-one being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of the Municipal Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin at the June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting?
Thank you. Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Latham will move and Counselor Hens will second. All in favor? That's carried. Brings us to the adjournment motion.
Be it resolved that we do now adjourn at twelve forty P M to meet again on July eleventh, twenty twenty-three at nine o'clock A M?
Counselor Whitner will move. Counselor Noble will second. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much for joining us today and have a pleasant day.